So it cannot be contracted over these waters. I think there's a limited exception exercise on property that's within the city limits and for public purpose such as roads, water facilities, sewage facility, sidewalks, things of that nature. And the process, in short, is that the council makes a counterpoint to the natural property area. The adopter or that the public use of the system for the property. The mayor and city attorney should do a review of your court. Maybe an exercise to determine just compensation for the property. And if the parties can't agree then they need to reach out in terms of compensation, some cases to the district court, at which point the court, whether you're in the right order, should be able to. So if it would be possible for the council to, if we rate future council, to get the property, if you were roads or other facilities. My understanding is that historically there's been limited, if any, use of eminent domain by the cities in Palm Springs. I've had opportunity to go all the way back in the record books. The city clerk has been here longer than I and might be able to offer some comments in that regard. It is, in my experience, something that cities generally, city councils generally are reluctant to avoid and typically only do so with other negotiations, not which is for obtaining the required public facility exhaust and it's another choice. It was designed to avoid holdouts. For example, if a city or building had voted on a particular alignment and a parcel was needed to prevent a situation where a property owner could obtain a reasonably high or extortionate compensation from the public treasury for the property by virtue of being the holdout. So the public agency has the open trump card in that respect, but in general, as I've said, it's something that's rarely in the bill to my knowledge and that they don't have to pass against the public. There are, it is also a little known fact that private property owners also have a statutory right to condemn a privately possessive. I can't speak to the details, I've received this from a long time since I've had an opportunity to look at that statute. So there are other situations out there as well that just say, other utilities, public utilities have that power, water sewer districts, most public corporations have the power. PSC, for example, also has. The private building, except in limited circumstances where they might be in, if you condemn a privately possessive, there's a landlord parcel. It's an unusual and little-known, little-used statutory procedure.
Oh, I was just going to ask, you know, my 13 years of being here, I've never used that pedal, and then you've been here longer.
I can remember, I can look that up. You're applying.
Well, I'll be very clear, I didn't use.
Just ask everybody to make more of an effort to pull the microphone closer to the speaker so that it's closer probably doesn't work down here. We don't get much time with the microphone.
All right, so I will ask one of my 73 questions here. So last week, I can't remember what it was, got up and told us about how 800 homes would create large revenue surpluses on the ridge. I believe that's a very hard sell in this community. As we finish up completion of SR2, we are not necessarily building our way out of, building our way into a surplus by building single-family homes. So I'm curious how you would sell that, since last time you spoke nothing of the commercial aspect that you were, that is on the map as well. So tell me how we're going to build our way out of debt or keep ourselves out of debt by building homes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to sit back and present tonight. This is Auntie Lee, the head of council of course, from Colton Heights Partners LLC. We've brought our technical professional consultants back with us this week to help answer questions, and so I would refer Councilmember Sundal's question to Morgan Shook with Ethel Northwest, who presented the fiscal and economic analysis last week. Yes, I should, I should say, we did provide the full, his full report in your packet tonight. So that we just got the end of last week, so that's the analysis that was behind his comments last week and then the report.
It's this one here.
Sure, I will kind of give some brief highlights that you are distinguishing here about SR1 and 2 versus what is being proposed right now. So in St. Pauli before, SR1 and SR2, very small city, right? I would call it kind of the sort of fridge of an existential sort of city that gets scaled. And as SR1 and SR2 developed, right, the city had to build and scale up its services to meet that demand. And what happens, right, at 13,000 people, you kind of have a lot of fixed costs, both sort of administration, city police department, city fire department. And now the question is for you, what is your ability to sort of scale off of that? Like every business, right, any, every enterprise is trying to figure out ways to scale. Can my sort of, the ratio of my revenue to my cost hopefully decreases, oh sorry, my cost relative to my revenues decreases as I get bigger, so how do I exploit that? And so, as you'll see in the detail here, the city on the revenue side is able to grow in three big ways. The first big way is it is able to exceed the 1% limit by the new add-on construction done times the city's previous levy, so it's able to grow its property tax levy in excess of its 1%, so it really leverages that growth. It also grows two big tax bases that are really important for the city's fiscal picture, the sales tax piece, both in terms of the sales tax on the construction value, as well as the sales tax on purchases made in homes and within the city boundary by those residents. It also grows its utility tax basis off the consumption of city-provided utilities and other private utilities that will be consumed by people in that area. So that's the revenue piece. So it's able to really grow its key revenue-based tax basis and its revenue base in excess a little faster than it would simply just by just continuing just to be at 13,000 people. On the cost side, and so this is where the economies of scales comes in, you're not going to need a new city administrator, you're not going to need a new city attorney or new finance director, you're really looking at sort of growing the sort of places where you had even more people, then it'll even more cost. So a principal.
Do you mean an additional city administrator?
Additional city administrator, sorry. Thank you. He's right there. You already have those positions in place, so you're not going to double up on those things. And so what that means is, you're, the average cost of serving an additional person goes down than it was today. And so you're not going to need a new police chief, a new sergeant, right, maybe it's another deputy, you know, maybe it's another firefighter. So those are the ways your marginal costs grow slower than the way they have in the past. And in both the short run and the long run, you're on the, you're maybe, you're able to sort of both bend the revenue curve in your favor and also sort of bend the cost curve in your favor over time. But you know, economic things happen, right? City, you have to come back here and balance budgets, and that's part of the thing, but structurally, are there things here that make your job easier from a financial picture? And the answer is yes, particularly at this scale. At 13,000, it's a tough spot for a lot of cities in Washington to kind of live it because you can't quite exploit those economies of scale.
So wouldn't it be interesting, though, that when we get to build out in 2031, I'm back to being relying on property taxes that have the 1% cap on them?
At, at, yeah, you're always subject to the 1%. It's the add-on value during build-out that allows you to exceed that each in the short run.
I guess where I'm having trouble with it is, we're trying to diversify away from property tax reliance. To me, this just adds more to that reliance, that I'm not getting an offsetting retailer or commercial use of equal greater value to reduce that reliance on property tax. So while I make my life really easy until 2030 or wherever, sits in a seat fully easy, until then, I still have the same home I do today, just further down the road, and giving it to the next generation.
I would care Chris that way. There are stricture limitations to the revenue base for every city in Washington. The 1% limit just gives that to everybody. And so your question is basically, how does this development impact that structural problem? And it helps you too. It grows your sales tax base by adding more households and it grows your, and hit the consumption sort of tax bases and sales tax and grow that thing. And it helps you bend your property tax revenue curve over time. Without that development, right, your, your property tax position's in worse shape, right, because you're not able to kind of grow that new add-on portion. So it grows our sales tax base or is it growing?
The sales tax base?
Yeah. I would say it grows worse. So first of all, you have a broad shift in retail sales taxes from place-based to going to someplace to certain econ. So what's happening in Washington actually is households themselves are becoming places that generate sales taxes for the jurisdiction. As people buy things on Amazon or whatever, those sales get recorded at the place that the money is delivered, which is within the city. So the city takes credit for those purchases. And then, right, people spend their money where, there's some trade here that, you know, there is a lot of basically proximity-based spending. People want to shop for their, you know, household goods or bars and restaurants, shows a certain proximity. Yeah, people will bang in other places as they do depending on sort of what's attractive.
Councilwoman.
Right, I have some questions, some clarifying questions about, um, the water rates issues. I'm pretty concerned about that. It seems like the water, it's, what impacts the water rate stuff, so I didn't know how we're going to go about determining if the water rates are actually there that we need and if they're there and if we need to go get more. But that's my making.
Councilwoman, is that, that sounds like a question for staff. You, you heard their interpretation, you're taking that last picture.
Thank you. Well, so I guess my concern, my concern here is, are we doing this research or is it helping?
That's, that's their research.
Right, okay.
Is Tom, is it Tom Corse?
Tom Corse was not able to be there tonight.
Okay.
Their consultant basically did an analysis and that was their conclusions.
Okay.
We may have a slightly different one.
Can we perhaps respond to the question?
That's what I was suggesting, if you were keen, if I could.
Yes, yes.
I've already, I've already asked the man, so we can.
Okay.
Well, let's see, if your question's now, we'll do it now. The questions are for staff and for the development. Is Dan, where's Dan? Dan, you want, you want to take that one, or Nancy, or do you want Bobby Surbeck to take that one? Are you guys interested?
Should we get to that one? Give a short answer to start off. The, the water study underway indicates a variety of projects and savings on top of the remaining water of 200 units. That was presented with Tom Corse's information last week. What I'll add is that in 2018, the city's ended updated water sewer and straw water comprehensive plan. The important aspect of that is currently in the water comprehensive plan, the mill site, which is in the city and is undergoing their master planning and environmental review, is not allocated water. So the information is mostly correct from Tom last week, but does not include the mill site in those numbers. So in, in that sense, that's the pot of water to provide for infill, mill site, page 1, 2, and 3, and this potential annexation. That was the missing part from that, from that one sheet last week.
Is affordable housing built into this table?
St. Pauli Ridge 2 is accounted for with the potter law, butter. So it's not part of the, the table that you have.
So there was a statement made by the presentation last week that basically it was incumbent on Tom the developer to make sure there is enough water. My question to you Mark is that, you know, we have the Salish, we have the mill site, we need to make sure we have water for them, you know, the developers have been working with us and mitigating. So if we were to eventually annex in, there is a possibility that this project could come in before either one of those two took the water and then those two developers. I'm just a pine, pine, but hot and dry.
The Salish already has a reservation of water by virtue of the development agreements, so like the SR2 water, affordable housing, that's not part of the table because it's already accounted for. But also for the correct other, with respect to the mill site, is for the possibility of changing the order of priority, the city's water system plan currently has priorities in a course service. And it is a higher priority to provide service to property that is located in the city and that has an existing entitlement, such as a development agreement for a master, or I'm sorry, mixed-use approval, as compared to property that's located in the unincorporated area and is not. So if the annexation area does come in and those can obtain an entitlement for the mill site, then it could reverse the priority that exists currently under those priority. And Nancy, do you want to?
I think the other way that you can look at this is, when you approve the rate ordinance, you also included a provision that it only have water entitlement when you apply for service and you pay for your general facilities charges to connect to the system. And so those entitlements even get more retail, but as you start to have to pay to actually have water set aside by the city to do that, and that's included in your, in the update that we do to the utility rates in early February, if you're sure.
Nancy, follow-up to the water question, it was on my list as well. So my understanding, you talked to Mayor Larson and with Fuzzy last week, St. Pauli Ridge was built not on the promise of water, but on water that already existed, is that your understanding?
That it's correctly brought through water rights.
So do we have precedent, this is maybe a question for staff, do we have a precedent in St. Pauli or in the local area where developments of this size get approval before waters? Is there a way?
It depends what you mean by developments. Right now, we're talking about an annexation, which is not a development. They have a conceptual proposal, but even if council, even if you were at the 60% approval stage, petition stage, which you're not, or at the 10% stage, approval of the annexation would not constitute approval of the development. So there are statutory requirements, both at the building permit stage and subdivision statutes, that require that fighting to be made about adequate provision for water. So the, the city's not able to prove an actual project, development project, without approval of adequate water.
So what you're saying is we could be a scenario where we have annexed, there's no water, we're stuck with an annexation and no developer that can build because there's no water. That's a conceivable option in April when they propose that we go to 60%.
There has to be adequate water for the developments, whether it's in the county or in the city. So that, that doesn't change, the annexation doesn't change that. That being said, the city does certainly have under the GMA service planning obligations, a plan for and provide water in the city and in its potential annexation area, which includes the post-annexation area, which is part of the reason why the city is pursuing water rights. Right now, we have a heading for new water.
How long's that been pending?
The applications went in in December of 2016.
Okay, so my understanding they've been pending for 10 to 15 years, that's not true?
There is some water rights that will be 10 or 15 years, and then we also put additional applications in, in December of last year since they were isolated.
Well, what you just said, just to clarify, it sounded like you're saying that prior to annexation, there is no state legal mandate to, or obligation to pursue water rights for that annexation area. After annexation, there's an additional obligation to, with the city to compare that with?
No, because the property is in our urban growth area and in our potential annexation area, and it's indicated in the water system plan as future retail service area. So the city does have some obligation to plan for it irrespective of when annexation occurs. That's the, the way the GMA anticipates it working is that you have a designated area of urban growth and expansion, and the city will plan for that, figure out a way to make service, urban services available and annex the property. So timing is always, always a question, but we aren't, the city isn't, wouldn't be taking on some new obligation by virtue of annexation that it doesn't partly can. It's just a question of when, when we pursue that and then when the city might obtain water rights or when the developer might obtain additional warrants or anything.
So that obligation from the state or program, it doesn't change whether it's in the urban growth area or annexed.
So if it does, if it's outside of the urban growth area, then we don't have any obligation. But this property is in the urban growth area and it's in the city's potential annexation right now.
But it sounds like the state could be satisfied if the plan was the simplest thing, we plan to provide additional water rights to this urban growth area, but you the state haven't sat on additional request for 15 years, therefore we're, we're done.
I'm not sure that's accurate in terms of how we can portray this, but I think that we do have a duty to serve areas in our potential annexation area. It's a requirement under state law for finding pool water systems, and that's part of the reason the council went after the water rights, 1% indicated council, 1% indicated earlier, and one that we have proposed for 2016 and trying to move forward. So we have sufficient water, we're attempting to get sufficient water to meet the areas that we have in our potential annexation.
Does the state look at water in, in terms of how they, at the glacial pace that they approved these things, that do they give priority to, oh, they've annexed, or oh, they're ready to develop, so they jumped in line? I mean, after 15 years, you start to feel thirsty, so I'm just wondering at what point these might get through. 15 years, a lot, is that normal? I mean, what, is there any?
Just to pick up on Nancy's comment about how we characterize the passage of time, and apologize, I'll go back into historical views here for a moment, but in the early to mid 90s, the administration of water rights and operation of the Department of Ecology became a highly contested political issue in the legislature that resulted at one point in the legislature, which was controlled by one party at that point in time, stripping the department of most of its funding to implement water rights. And so the, because the concern was that the department wasn't being appropriately sensitive to property owner needs for additional water, and so they were going to punish the department by stripping it of most of its funding. And so the department's response was, and I think this is a fair characterization, to go to a strict time-based priority and they would process applications with the funding they had in the order that they came in. And if that meant that applications would take 10 years to process, it would take 10 years to process. They also implemented along with that a pay-to-play system that said, if you want your application to move forward and you're ready, you can pay all of our costs to process it, we will then move it up to the head of the line and move it forward. The city has had an application pending since, I would say, 1995. It did not elect to continue paying to process that, so it's, there were options to accelerate that, that my understanding is having, that the city doesn't avail itself of today. So that's.
Last question.
Kind of how we got to where we are.
We could theoretically require the developer to enter that pay-to-play mode to move that up, right?
That's a possible litigation option.
Well, I should have had to start out by, or maybe hang on for one more minute and ask you if there's some more questions on that. Just for folks at the door, can you explain kind of cliff note version of what's happening with water rights? Why? Why is that different to other stuff where we can actually build more?
I'll try, I'm not sure that a cliff note version exists, but essentially the right, at one point in time, private property owners claimed the right to water, ownership of water, that was adjacent to, according to their property. Back east, if you get, if your property was adjacent to a stream, that gave you a right to use the stream. In the western states, and that's called a riparian basis, western states have a prior appropriation doctrine, which is first in time, first in right, and they've heard that. And that by doing so, first to use the water could acquire the legal right to use, so as against subsequent users who'd come along and try and use the same stream and the same property ground mark. As you might imagine, that led to overuse and overappropriation in certain areas, and so, starting in the early 1900s, the state legislature passed laws that appropriated all water to ownership of the state, subject to use rights that would be granted to private parties who acquired and went through review by what was then the Department of Engineering, now it's the Department of Ecology. And so a water right is not ownership, but it's a right to use water that's granted by the state after a review process. And that review process now includes whether or not your proposed water right use could potentially impair the rights of seniors, since again, remember, first in time, first in right, there are senior water users who have rights that have been acquired in previous decades or centuries before. And so the department's analysis includes some review of whether a new proposal would impair senior water users, including in-stream flow levels that are established by regulation for certain streams and rivers including some. Does that capture it, Mayor? Sorry, there's a, there's a lot of information there.
Senator, if I could provide just a quick context from, although Tom Corse was not able to be here tonight, these are all really good questions, and they're questions that of course would be more thoroughly worked through between the nose of intent and the 60% annexation. I think it's important to state that what Tom Corse was finding when he put his table together, is that there's very likely enough water in the city's existing water right, enough capacity in the city's existing water right, with those actions taken, to largely serve both the mill site and the annexation area. And as you've heard, that is the annexation area, the UGA, you not only have policies to serve that, that you have a state mandate to serve that area that's part of your water service areas. In addition, you know, even if those elements are, turn out more conservative than he had projected, it is only in the later phases of the annexation that we may have to wait on the water right to come through. And when water rights are in, and all the questions are the, the ideas about having us, having the developer pay to expedite the processing of the water right, that's a fine idea. Having, the other thing that Tom Corse has offered to the city is he helped North Bend achieve its water right and in its moratorium some years back. He's very familiar with their water right, with the mitigation that is available to be used in the context of that water right to help move the city of St. Pauli's water right along. So he, in his own right, is a, is a resource that we can help bring to bear to address water for those later phases, and also for whatever system improvements might be needed to generate the additional capacity of the existing water right. And again, the final thing that I would say on that is, when you bring the annexation area in and there isn't enough, enough water in the existing water right to carry through the development of all of the proposal, it is the developer who will bear the risk of those later phases until that water does become available. So I just wanted to provide that context for you.
Just wanted to follow up with a question for you. And the water to the, isn't affected? I assume that is for the homes only, I didn't know to continue the commercial space.
That water table is really just a supply table, is not a demand table, except in the extent that it says, the city's comp plan, a water service plan, already assumes that all of the reserved, all of the developmental renovations are served, and the mill site's first phase, which is about 260 residential units, have served us in their application, would be covered by the 290 units that is already readily available from the existing water right. From that point, it's just a table of water supply becoming available. But just to, just to say, I think the overall mill site was about 700 ERUs, the active adult proposal was 800 ERUs. That may be one ERU per household, or some of them may be, you know, another thing we could see, can look at when it updates its comprehensive plan, are there household types and sizes, such as these with the average resident per household is less than two? So perhaps the ERU is adjusted for those, as it is sometimes for multi-family houses, you have less than one ERU per unit. So there, there are a lot of pieces in play, and it's a lot of, you know, a lot of analysis to put that all together, but there are a lot of pieces to work with in order to make it work. Thank you.
Nancy, before we leave this subject, I don't know if you have Tom. Nancy, before we leave this subject, I don't know if you have Tom Corse wrapped in front of you, but are there any observations, things that would raise concerns for the city? I, I can recall, one was the Lake Alice.
Yeah, I wanted the Lake Alice. I. Why don't you continue to deal with reconsideration of the commitment to Lake Alice for the two hundred and eighty, a question in, what are the terms that allow us to do that reconsideration? I didn't know they were worth.
Well, I think the analysis, what I understood in conversations we had with Tom Corse, is that there's an assumption that if we have to serve Lake Alice, that the water that they currently are drawing out of wells, private wells, whatever, would then be turned over to the city. We could transfer those water rights to the city's use and maybe use them also. It's similar to the proposal that we have in the court. Their court can get a no net loss. That goes a.
That was, that was the thing else that was presented, was reconsideration of the two hundred and eighty units to fund these development.
So the commitment the city has to Lake Alice is, from my understanding, but maybe you can help out if I get this wrong, is that we are committed to providing them with water as long as we continue to monitor things to within five years after St. Pauli Ridge is completed, that would be SR two. So that, if that happens with the housing units and others that are close, am I wrong about that, Bob?
Well, to be a little more precise.
Okay.
There's a, SR two mixed-use plan had in it conditions that required monitoring of various environmental, baseline environmental provisions. One of the monitoring requirements was, and, and this is a situation where the city conducts the monitoring, but the applicant, or the, the then applicant, so the SR two developer, was required to pay the ongoing costs of monitoring, determine whether the new impervious surface from St. Pauli Ridge caused a decline in, in the recharge to the Lake Alice wells. There's no condition in SR two mixed-use approval that requires the city to make up water to Lake Alice. And in fact, Lake Alice is in the unincorporated, the rural unincorporated area, and absent a legal emergency under the GMA, the city's not allowed to serve Lake Alice with water. So the city does not have a legal commitment to supply water, and there is a commitment that if an impact is identified, that some adaptive strategy will be adopted to try to address it. In an abundance of caution, the city has in its water accounting essentially reserved some portion in case there was an impact to Lake Alice. We're not required to provide it, but I think the, the assumption was that there was an impact, that the city would consider making extending water service to Lake Alice. And I think Mr. Corse's view was, if that happened, the city could require in return, as Nancy said, that the Lake Alice rights.